Good evening and welcome to the July 21, 2022 meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees. Would you please join me and everyone else in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and thank you for being here. A roll call of trustees reveals we have Vice Chair Nancy Ingram, former Chair Trustee Musil, and Trustee Mark Hamill is here. Do we have Trustee Don Rattan yet?
She will be here a few minutes late.
Very good. You told me that. So we have four trustees and a quorum present tonight. First, tonight, we'll start with awards and recognitions, and I believe Dr. Bound will introduce David Omwenga.
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 So I would like to introduce David, if you'd like to come forward. I'd like to introduce you to David. You know, for me, this is a highlight of the meeting, in addition to hanging out with all of you and conducting the business of the college. But spending the time one-on-one with the students in preparation for the board meeting is something I look forward to each and every month, and I run into David fairly frequently on campus. So, in fact, he made sure I ate well the other day. So anyways, David is an international student, and so David, if you'd like to share your story, whatever you'd like to know, trustees to know about you. Thank you so much for having you here.
All right. Thank you so much. The President, the Board of Trustees, and the protocol observe. Good evening. So I would like to take this golden opportunity for giving me this chance to introduce myself. My name is David Omwenga. I'm an international student from Kenya. I came here in 2019 on December. It was really cold, but I'm glad I'm able right now to adapt how the weather is because back in Africa, we see the tropical climate that is Kenya. We see the tropical climate, which is really good, 60s or 50s sometimes. But here, it was really, really cold, but I really managed. I used to stay a lot every time in the house. I don't want to go outside because when I go outside, it was really horrible for me, but I managed. So I started JCC coming to school from 2020. That's when I started my classes. So I started with my English proficiency. So I did the EAP classes. That is under liberal arts. So I started that. Then after that, from 2021, that's when I started now my course for registered nurse. And I'm glad on that field, which has really helped me. JCC fraternity has really helped me since that day, helping me involve your classes. And I'm really glad that right now I am. I really thank God for determination that I've been having all this way through. It's been a tough journey. They say it's always impossible until get it done, until it's done. I thank the hard work that have helped me through JCC. It has helped me on determination, education on my studies, and everything that we do until right now. I'm glad I get I involved myself at JCC on the fields, like on the Student Senate, which has really helped me so much on leadership skills. I was not even able to talk to everyone. It was very hard for me to speak in front of because it reminds me in Africa when I used to be like when you go in a staff room or in a or your principal's office, it was very hard to go there because you know when you go there, it's going to be hard for you. It's going to maybe you're in a mistake or something like that. But I'm glad right now that I'm able to speak out and introduce myself, which I'm really glad of that. And and something else I want to say is thank you so much, JCC fraternity for these are home for me. It has really made me grow until where I am right now, and thank you so much. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Any questions for David?
I would be my daughter would skewer me if I didn't ask you where you're from in Kenya. She spent two months in Eldoret at the Children's Hospital there during her residence at the Pediatric Children's Hospital there. What are you from that southwestern part of Kenya?
Yeah, so I never said I think she's in Eldoret. Eldoret, so that's where I took I after my high school, I went to Eldoret where I took my Information Sciences. I took a Bachelor in Information Science over there for two years before I proceeded to come here. So I went to Eldoret. It was a Moore University, why I did Information Technology before I came here. Yeah.
I may get your contact information and put you in touch with her. She loved the children there. What are your plans going forward?
Yeah, so my plans is to achieve my goals, who's to become a registered nurse, and also continue my IT that I used to I keep I was doing back in Africa from the school I was here.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you so much.
Questions? Any other questions for David?
I would just say, if you don't want, you are thanking us. We are thanking you for being here, just as Trustee Musil said, thank you. How did you land in Johnson County? How did you find us?
Yeah, thank you.
I might have missed that, so help me out.
Yeah, so when I was doing my studies in Africa at the Moore University, I have my sister here who helped me, applied for me, be like my sponsor. So he helped me and he applied for me. Then I was able to I did my TOEFL exam with the English. So I passed well then. There I was able to get an opportunity to come over here, and that's how I landed over here.
That is awesome. It's not lost on me that you have been here through COVID. So that's when you arrived.
Yeah, when I came, everything shut down. I had to go back in the house.
We're glad you chose us.
Yes, thank you so much. Yeah.
So pardon my ignorance. When did you start back in person? Was that fall of '21 or this spring?
The classes? Yeah, I started in spring 2020, before the COVID hit.
I know, but was that all? Well, I guess you would have been in person, huh?
In person, the classes.
When did he transition away from online? Would that have been?
We started transitioning at a slow pace on the fall of '20, and it really kicked in to a higher level this past fall.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Just curious.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, David.
You're welcome.[465.12][465.12](applause)
Next on our agenda, we have the open forum section. Do we have any open forum speakers? Did you have a question?
Yeah, we got it.
Okay. Is there anybody for the open forum? As I have no idea. Seeing none, I will state that the open forum section of the board agenda is a time for members of the community to provide comments to the board. There will be one open forum period for each regularly scheduled board meeting. Comments are limited to five minutes unless a significant number of people plan to speak, and in that instance, the chair may limit a person's comments to less than five minutes. In order to be recognized, individuals must register at the door at each board meeting prior to the open forum agenda. When addressing the board, registered speakers are asked to remain at the podium, should be respectful, civil, and are encouraged to address individual personnel and student matters directly with the appropriate college department. As a practice, the college does not respond in this setting when the matter concerns personnel, student issues, or matters that are being addressed through our established grievance or suggestion process, or otherwise the subject of the review by the college or board. I will say again, there is nobody to speak tonight. This policy is posted online, and as I was trying to cut it down in my haste, there's also still an option for people to register online, correct? I look at my lawyer first. Sorry. I don't mean to put the pressure on you.
To participate.
They can still sign up by Zoom, right? And they have to sign up by 5:00 p.m. the day before. Okay. So there's no speakers tonight. The next item on our agenda is board reports, and we'll start with the distinguished gentleman from Shawnee County, Mr. Dick Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are in the dog days of summer, and today is probably the doggiest, at least as far as the heat is concerned. Not much is happening in the way of legislative interims or activity, but there's lots of campaigning going on. I would not want to be going door-to-door on a day like today on an afternoon or early evening, but there's lots of signs appearing everywhere, ads on TV and radio. You're probably even seeing some ads on social media. And right now, the statewide race that's getting the most attention is the Attorney General's race, and I think that's going to be an interesting one to continue to watch, just as are all of them. But that one seems to be ramping up at least statewide. Little in the way of legislative activity will happen until after the primary, and in many cases, probably the bulk of the work will be occurring after the the general in November. We will see some local activity ramping up. Well, it's state, too. It's statewide regarding the rehearing at the Board of Tax Appeals for the Walmart property valuation cases. As you're aware, the Supreme Court reversed the Court of Appeals decision and remanded the case back to the Board of Tax Appeals for reconsideration without the application of the pre case that has been held at most of the at the Board of Tax Appeals hearings that have occurred recently. That case dates back or stems back to a Best Buy case against the state of Kansas or against the Board of Tax Appeals. I'm not aware of any date that's been set yet. We're watching that closely. I've been digging around to see if we can find when that rehearing might be set. Certainly, all eyes will be pointed to Johnson County. Things like fair market value, fee simple interest, lease fee estate, those are all terms that are going to be talked about when this case comes up for a rehearing. I think that you'll see folks presenting evidence of what has occurred in Wisconsin and New York. Certainly, the Supreme Court took into consideration the fact that the appellate court was split in its decision. So we'll see. We'll see what happens when that comes because that's a huge that has a huge impact, not only for us, but for many governing local governing bodies across the state of Kansas. And and some might say, hey, that's the first step in as a victory. Certainly, it does allow those cases to be reheard. And again, we're talking about tens of millions of dollars that are that are sort of in limbo. Lots of interim committees that I included in the in the report, at least four that we'll be watching very closely. But most important probably will be the Legislative Task Force on Community Colleges and Technical College Funding. We have good representation on that committee. The dates haven't been set yet, but several dates are being discussed toward the end of August and the middle part of September. So that committee will actually kind of get up and running, probably one of the earlier committees that will be meeting, and we'll be watching that very closely as that impacts the distribution formulas for for technical colleges and community colleges. I think one final note, and this is a very brief report, Mr. Chair, because not a lot is going on at this point during the summer. But we have learned that all of the ARPA funds will be handled by the Department of Commerce. So that that will impact our earmark of 2.5 million for the CDL Driving Course. They're currently developing procedures and protocols for what that that process will look like. But it's just something that we're kind of learning bits and pieces about how some of those dollars are going to be distributed and who's going to be overseeing them day by day. So I think I would stop there, see if there's any questions or if there's any questions about anything that was in the report that I maybe didn't cover specifically. I know you know how to read and and didn't want to be repetitive. So I would stop there.
Any questions for Mr. Carter?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Mr. Carter, can you just elaborate a little bit more about the ARPA funds? They will be spent out, is it next June?
Well, they became available.
Or distributed. How does that work?
I think the distribution can be before next June, and it's depending on our ability to be ready to rock and roll. The funds became available on July 1 of this year, so just a couple of weeks ago. And so once the process is in place, we can draw those down as long as we meet the right criteria for for what those matches look like.
Okay. All right. Thank you for clarification.
Mr. Carter, the retreat next week in Hutchinson for the Board of Regents. Is that by invitation only?
I would think that anyone who wants to contact the Board of Regents, it is, as I understand, at a public meeting. I think it's kind of hard to to get into. I do know that Heather Morgan from the Association will be there, as will Carter File from Hutch Community College. And I think it might be it's going to be at the Kansas Leadership Center. So I don't know if they have a facility in Hutch or not, but it might be in Wichita. I know that the press has tried to go before. It's interesting. Not a lot on online as far as an agenda is concerned, but as far as I know, it's considered a an open or a public meeting.
Thank you for that. Anything else for Mr. Carter? Okay, Dick, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Next item on our agenda is a report from the Faculty Association, Professor Brett Cooper.
Good evening. The end of the summer is around the corner. Summer classes are ending next week, and before the next board meeting, campus will be buzzing during PLD as we finalize preparations for the fall semester. But before that, we look forward to welcoming 30 new full-time faculty to campus. They will begin their JCCC careers, along with four mid-year hires from this last year, in an orientation and induction program called LENS. This will be the second week of August. I do want to say that for many years, LENS was a faculty-led program, and that changed last year. We hope that the administration will work with us to get back to having this as a faculty-led program as it is the introduction of new faculty into the culture of the college, and we believe that's most appropriate. The summer has given us several exciting projects. Professors Jay Antle from History and Sustainability and Lynn Bedi of Geology led, I believe, two trips to Iceland, where students learned about the island's advanced, sorry, advancements in sustainability, the impact of climate change, and the complex geology of the island. Professor Hugh Clark received a grant to do an internship at SMC Corporation of America. During the six weeks at the Lenexa Company, Professor Clark learned how updating technology can reduce manufacturing costs. He also worked with sales representatives to solve some real-world problems, and he can take both of these sets of lessons back to the classroom. Looking forward to the future, Professors Beth Edmund and Sineetha Menon won a $1.5 million NSF grant, which will provide 54 two-year scholarships to Pell Grant-eligible students. The program has a goal of helping facilitate the students' successful transfer to four-year institutions. Today, Professors Melanie Harvey and Heather Seitz were notified that they won a $0.5 million NSF grant to support course-based undergraduate research experiences in science. This summer has also been there's also been a committee formed to find a replacement for the sunsetting verb program. The committee will take or will make recommendations that are financially sustainable, will reward employees for their service to the college, provide options for long-term employees before they hit Medicare age, and be mindful that benefits must be negotiated with Faculty Association. Doug Copeland from Economics and Barry Bailey from the Library are representing the faculty on this important committee. The committee has been meeting weekly throughout the summer to learn about and explore new options. We look forward to their continued work and learning about the recommendations when their committee work is done. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Professor Cooper? I do want to note, Trustee Rattan has now joined us, I think. Didn't I see her? Okay. Brett, I don't have any questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I assume we'll get the schedule for professional learning days from Terry or whatever, so we'll have a chance to participate in some of those.
We just received it, and so we'll get it out to you by early next week at the latest.
Thank you, Brett.
Next item on our agenda is a report from Trustee Musil about the Johnson County Education Research Triangle.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Johnson County Education Research Triangle is funded by a voter-approved 1/8 cent sales tax that occurred in 2008. It funds the KU Cancer Center, the KU Edwards Campus, and the K-State Olathe Campus. In the numbers I have for June of 2022, $2 million, about $2.1 million in sales tax revenues were created in that one month. That's 17.5% over June of 2021, and for the year, sales tax receipts are up 17.1%. Obviously, part of that is reflecting reflecting the inflation and prices that also increase the sales tax percentage. I think it's important to note that since our meeting last time on July 13, the KU Cancer Center was named one of 53 comprehensive cancer centers by the National Cancer Institute. I think the press release related that that has been a 20-year process. It's been 14 years since the sales tax was passed, 13 years since it started to be collected, and that has been a big part of KU Cancer Center's success rate, and it's good for everybody in this county and in the metropolitan area. So I'd like to congratulate the KU Cancer Center on that. That concludes my report.
Mr. Chair, if I may ask you a question, previous Chair Musil, excuse me. The tax was instrumental in the NCI designation?
Well, what the taxes allowed KU Cancer Center to do is have resources of probably over 13 years, around $120 million, that were probably not available elsewhere in funding, certainly from the state of Kansas. So that funding has allowed them to expand their research, their clinical research, their scientific research, which is part of the NCI designation requirements.
We certainly thank the creativity of those leaders and the taxpayers for their support. So thank you for your report, Mr. Trustee. The next item on our report is the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees. Our very own trustee Ingram is the president of the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees.
Thank you, Chair. My report is extremely short. It is the summertime. We do have our presidential phone calls that we still are a part of on Thursday mornings from 11 to 12. Our next quarterly meeting is Friday and Saturday, September 2 and 3. We will be at Fort Scott Community College. Looking forward to that.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Wow, this is unprecedented.
Enjoy.
Next item on our agenda is the committee reports and recommendations beginning.
Foundation for Don?
Foundation for Trustee Rattan.
Here. Good evening, everyone. We welcomed Joy Ginsburg on July 1. We're excited to work with Joy and excited about her leadership. We met last our last meeting was June 21 at 5:00 p.m. The Executive Committee approved the foundation's annual current operating budget. Next meeting of the new fiscal year for the Foundation Board of Directors is September 21, 2022. We have a lot of great events coming up, so everyone get their calendars out. So we have a welcome reception for our new Executive Director, Joy, on August 18 in the Academic Resource Center in the Billington Library. Next, the wonderful Center for Sustainability's Harvest Dinner will be returning on Friday, September 2, to support scholarships for students in JCCC's Sustainable Agriculture Program. Tickets are $60, or you can get a table of eight for $480. You can buy online at jccc.edu/harvest-dinner. Laysa for Learning 5K Run and Walk, I think this last year is really fun, is returning to campus on Sunday, October 9, with proceeds benefiting scholarships. Visit jccc.edu/layso5k to learn more and register. And of course, everyone should already have the Sum Enchanted Evening Gala on their calendar for in-person on November 12 at the Overland Park Convention Center. Major event sponsorship opportunities are still available, with table sponsorships and individual tickets going on sale later this summer. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee Rattan. Any questions for Trustee Rattan and the foundation?
Is there a time set for the welcoming or reception for Joy on the?
Yes.
4:00?
It does not say stayed in here.
Producer's saying.
Takes us 4:00. I'm reading her fingers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I never looked at the audience to see what fingers are being held up.
I was looking for Kate. She's right in front of me. Thank you, Trustee Rattan. The next item on our agenda is the committee reports and recommendations, beginning with the Committee of the Whole report, which can be found on your board packet at pages 1 through 23. And I will briefly read what we have here. The Committee of the Whole did meet via Zoom on 8 at 8:30 a.m. on Monday, June 27, 2022. Dr. Bound, trustees Cross, Hamill, Musil, and Rattan attended the meeting. Trustees Laura Smith-Evert joined the meeting at about 9:32 a.m., and Nancy Ingram and Joy Coesten were absent. Strategic Plan Metrics Update was provided by Mr. Clayton, the Executive Director of Institutional Effectiveness, and he presented the most recent key performance indicator results and targets for the 2021 through 25 strategic plan, and the board reviewed the data and asked questions concerning the following results, which can be found on page 1. The new KPIs are still in the process of being developed and are expected to be developed and implemented as follows. With respect to community partnerships, the number of community partnerships, initial data collection by December 22, with a target established by July 2023. Partnership satisfaction and initial data collection by May 2023, with target established by July 2023. Community satisfaction, the initial data collection to be completed by May 2023, with target established for July 2023. Diversity, equity, and belonging. With respect to those topics, employee belonging, initial data collection will be done in June 2023 with a target established for July. And college scoreboard, dashboard completed by the fall of 2023. Employee engagement, initial data collection will be done by June 2023 with target data established by July 2023. And employee development, initial data collection by June 2023 with a target established by July 2023. I do want to say that this is critically important in terms of explaining what we do, in my opinion, and I thank the president and the administration for the time and effort it takes to collect all this data, especially Mr. Clayton. So I just wanted to thank them for that. It is therefore the recommendation of the college administration that the Board of Trustees adopt, targets for the key performance indicators of the 2021-25 strategic plan for the academic year 2022-2023, as is shown in the board packet, and I so move.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, Mr.?
Mr. Chair, the only question that I had, and I just noticed it in my notes. I apologize for not bringing it to someone's attention prior to now. But as we are looking at the new metrics, the new metric under student success, the post-graduation employed in a related field of study.
Uh huh.
Is that included in there? Should it be included? And I, again, please, it's at my apologies.
I don't see. Is it in there?
That is.
The metric of 89%?
Um, yes.
The target of 89%?
Right.
That was right there.
But did that need to be included in the statement?
Oh, I see what you're saying. It is in that.
I'm not trying to confuse it, but I just it caught my eye, and I just as I turned my page, I saw it, and I thought, ooh, does that need to be included in here? And maybe not. So.
We're adopting all of these, right?
You're adopting all of these.
So it's okay.
It's probably my fault. I skipped through it.
No, 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 no.
The targets are established on page 1.
Right.
Right.
And the targets yet to be established are on page 2 with a timeline for those.
I apologize. I mean.
That's okay.
But I literally I turned it over, and I saw my note here, and I thought, oh.
I think you mean to highlight it.
To highlight it.
Yes. And that what does the 89% mean, Dr. Bound? Sorry.
If we were to John, do you want to just jump in and?
Yes.
Because I do think it's important, and I'm sorry.
I am so sorry.
No, 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 no. I think it's my purview. I just asked.
So what I'm believing it is, it's the target set for the percent of our CTE graduates that are employed, and that should be set at 89%. It should be included in with the targets to be set.
But that.
So that is post-graduation for CTE only?
That's correct.
Yes, career in technical education only. That's that's the group of the students that we are required to report for Perkins reporting. We have occasionally in the past surveyed some of our others, but it's a very expensive data collection to do. And so we most of the other ones are transfer students, and they we collect them through the National Clearinghouse data.
Mr. Chair, my only thought would be that we need to label that employees employed in a related field of study, print, CTE, or something. Am I missing it? But right now, it looks like it could be every every student that graduates.
And the chart, I know it's labeled correctly. I'm not sure on the document itself. Should be CTE employed.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do we want to amend it, or can we vote on it? Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Aye.
The motion, the recommendation passes unanimously.
I want to check. Dawn was a little late, so it sounded like she said aye on the nose.
I took it as an aye. Did you, did you object?
I did not object, I did not object.
Why did you object?
I did not.
Oh, my.
I was just laid, I was laid on the mute button.
Next up are policy updates and recommendations on page 3 that I will, with the permission of the board, point to on page 3 and then read the report and recommendation on page 4, if I may. The Committee of the Whole has reviewed the recommended changes to the accounting system policy 210.01. And the recommended changes rename and renumber the policy, incorporate the fiscal year policy 210.02, and the financial reporting policy 210.03 provisions, and add an applicability and purpose statement. It is the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole that the board of trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve modifications to, modification to, and renumbering of the accounting policy 210.01 as shown subsequently in the board packet. And I would make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. The next report, the Committee of the Whole reviewed the recommendation, recommended deletion of the fiscal year policy 210.02, and the recommended changes delete the policy and move substantive provisions to the accounting system policy 210.01. It is the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole that the board of trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve deletion of the fiscal year policy 210.02 as shown subsequently here in this board packet, and I would so move.
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Do I need to say, move by trustee Cross, seconded by trustee Muzel?
It would probably help whoever's, Caitlin or whoever's taking.
I know, I was trying to speed through it, but I apologize for the difficulty. Any discussion? None, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. The next report, the Committee of the Whole reviewed the recommendation, the recommended deletion of the financial reporting policy 210.03, and the recommended change, changes delete the policy and move the substantive provisions to the accounting system policy of 210.01. It is therefore the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole that the board of trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve deletion of the financial reporting policy 210.03 as is subsequently, subsequently shown in the board packet. And I would so move.
Second.
Motion has been moved by trustee Cross and seconded by trustee Ingram. All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any objection? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Oh, sorry.
I was not coherent. The motion passes unanimously. Next report, the Committee of the Whole reviewed the recommended changes to the designation of banks and distribution dispersment authority policy 210.04. The recommended changes add an applicability and purpose statement. It is therefore the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole that the board of trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve modification to the designation of banks and dispersment authority 210.04 as shown subsequently here in the board packet. And I would so move.
Second.
Motion has been moved by trustee Cross and seconded by trustee Hamill. All those in favor, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. The next report for the Committee of the Whole reviewed the recommended changes to the cash reserves policy 210.07. The recommended changes are, add an applicability and purpose statement. It is the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole that the board of trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve modification to the cash reserves policy 210.07 as shown subsequently in the board packet, and I so move.
Second.
Motion has been moved by trustee Cross and seconded by trustee Muzel. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I just note that we added language. If, if the general fund reserves fall below our guidelines, and it's for, the new language is for a sustained period of time, which is ambiguous to some extent and undefined, but I think it's been very clear that this board, if we ever fall below that, that area, it will be brought up to the attention of the administration. And I don't have any doubt that the president will also note it because it will be something extraordinary.
I agree. All those, any other discussion? Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, please say no. Motion passes unanimously. The next report from the Committee of the Whole reviewed the recommended changes to the debt management policy 210.08. The recommended changes reorder the content of the policy and add an applicability and purpose statement. It is therefore the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole that the board of trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve modification to the debt management policy 210.08 as shown subsequently in the board packet. And I would so move.
Second.
The motion has been made by trustee Cross and seconded by trustee Muzel. Any discussion?
I would go ahead and bring out, just based upon the conversation that you just brought up. We did delete, as a general rule, the present value savings of a particular refunding should equal or exceed 3% of the refunded maturities. And I, I did speak with Rachel Ears regarding that and felt very comfortable with her, you know, decision to go ahead and remove that from the policy. So I support that and just wanted to share that, that I had reached out to her.
I thank you for that. Any other?
I would also point out that this is the authority to incur debt. We have historically not incurred very much debt. And if I look at the Treasury's report, for the full year of fiscal year 2022, our debt service was under $4 million out of a significant budget. So we've been very careful and have incurred debt only when necessary, for instance, in the master facilities plan. And we have refunded debt whenever we can do, get a better interest rate. So I thank Rachel and our consulting, financial consultants. So this makes sense to me.
I concur.
And may I just say thank you very much for bringing that up? Because I think sometimes we keep moving forward and your reminders to that effect are really important for us all to hear and be reminded of, so thank you.
I'm the new Jerry Cook.
You can be.
Or actually, and I, I just want to point out, and I thank the trustee for raising the issue because that is in the statement. I mean, the statement is there and publicly available for all to read. I've been on almost as long as trustee Muzel, and I don't remember much debt. But it's just nice to have in case we need it. Any other discussion? Trustee Hamill? Trustee Ratan, do you have anything?
No, I do not.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed, please say no. Motion passes unanimously. The Committee of the Whole next reviewed the recommended changes to the capital funding policy 210.09. The recommended changes add an applicability and purpose statement and clean up the language used in the policy to improve consistency and remove redundancy. Redundancy. It is the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole that the board of trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve modification to the capital funding policy 210.09 as shown subsequently here in this board packet, and I would so move.
Second.
Motion has been moved by trustee Cross and seconded by trustee Ingram. Any discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, please say no. The motion passes unanimously. The next item, the Committee of the Whole reviewed the recommendation deletion of the receipt and deposit of the funds policy 210.11. The recommendation, the recommended changes delete the policy and move the substantive provisions to the receipt and deposit of funds operating procedure 210.11. It is recommend, it is the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole that the board of trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve deletion of the receipt and deposit of funds policy 210.11 as shown subsequently in this board packet, and I would so move.
Second.
Motion has been moved by trustee Cross, seconded by trustee Muzel. Any discussion? Seeing, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Anyone who disagrees, please say no. The motion passes unanimously. The Committee of the Whole next reviewed the recommended changes to the budgeting policy 211.01. The recommended changes clean up the language in the policy and add an applicability and purpose statement. It is therefore the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole that the board of trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve modification to the budgeting policy 211.01 as shown subsequently in this board packet. I so move.
Second.
Motion has been made by trustee Cross and seconded by trustee Ingram. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing, seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed, please say no. The motion passes unanimously. The Committee of the Whole next reviewed and recommended creation of the sustainability policy 217.10. The recommended provisions create the policy describing the college's commitment to sustainability. And it is therefore my great pleasure that the college, the Committee of the Whole recommends that the board of trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve creation of the sustainability, sustainability policy 210.10 as shown subsequently in this board packet. I so move.
Second.
Trustee Cross moves and trustee Ratan seconds. Any discussion? Trustee Hamill?
Yeah, thank you. So we've talked about equity a few times here, and I believe in Dr. King's vision of equality. Equity is another thing that I am not in favor of. If we're interested in changing it to equality, I would definitely be able to vote for it. So I'll make a motion to change out equity for equality.
May I ask a question?
Yes, please.
How, how would it read then, Mark, under your?
Social equality. That'd be basically the only difference.
Oh, there's equity right there, social equity in the first paragraph?
Yeah.
Does the trustee have a second to amend the motion?
I'll second it for discussion purposes.
Okay, the motion has been moved and seconded. Jeepers at 5, how does this go? All those in favor, please signify by saying.
We have a discussion about, on the amendment, I want to hear, if Mark has some other explanation or whatever, I, I want to make sure we hear that.
Any discussion? Yes, thank you. Any discussion?
Sure, I can discuss more. So I've seen, I've had this multiple discussions on equity, and I think I've talked about equity with everybody here versus equality. There is a photograph I've seen used before in a class, and they were trying to explain it to me. And they had, you know, three individuals looking over a fence. And two of them, one could see really well because they were taller. The one that was medium could just barely see. The shortest one clearly could not see over the fence. And then they each had a block they were standing on to look over. And, and basically what they did is they took one from the, from the tallest person and engaged the smallest person. So you had an equal outcome, not an equal opportunity. And in lots of ways, there's great ways to do that. And, and as individuals, I believe we all should do those things when we see those needs. But as an institution, I do not believe we should be creating equal outcomes. We should be creating equal opportunities for everybody that comes along. And one of the great examples I use is on our basketball team. I want the best basketball player we can have on our team, and I want to win as many championships that we can at this school and any other school has the same idea. But if we start basing it on your height, and we have to have certain quotas, and everybody has to fit in certain boxes to get equal outcomes on, on the team, that's, that's not really what we're looking for and what I want to, what I want to see happen here on campus. And, and I know that some of you have talked about equity and saying you don't see a difference between equity and equality. And again, if that's true, then, then let's go to equality. Because when I've had people explain this to me multiple times, it's equal opportunity versus equal outcomes.
Trustee, anything else?
That'll do it for me.
Is Mike available to speak to this, Mr. Neil?
I am. Good afternoon, everybody. Can you hear me?
Mike, will you introduce yourself? Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. I'm Mike Neal, Executive Vice President and Chief Operating Officer. Now trustee Hamill, I understand your perspective. I, I, I do think that we crafted this policy and we chose to term social equity. It was not with respect to trying to create equal outcomes for everyone. What our social equity policy does, in the statement that we have there, is to try to create social equity with respect to sustainability. And we do that in several different ways. We do that with respect to how we handle waste. I will say that some of our students incur social inequities with respect to, with respect to the environment, depending on where they live. It could be an environment where there, where there's noise. It could be an environment where there is pollution. So those inequities do exist. That's a part of what you have when you have environmental equities. But our policy and what we're trying to do is with respect to social equity and how we practice at the college. That's one of the core tenets that we have, is part of those three, of the triple bottom line focus that we have there within the policy that we crafted.
What is the triple bottom line? Did he define that?
Yes, sir.
It's in here.
Okay.
It's in there with respect to the ecology. With respect to economics, and also with respect to social equity.
Thank you.
So I, I don't think I got my question fully answered. And I get what you're saying, and I agree with the majority of what, what you're getting at. And I think we, hopefully, I think we all want the same outcome or same goals here in mind. So do you see a difference in equity and equality? And would that change the definition of what we want to do with this policy if we go to equality?
I like the term social equity as we have it defined there because it goes to the, the, the spirit and the letter of what we're trying to accomplish as a part of the sustainability policy. So social equity, as I said, and the things that we operate, and as a part of what we've been doing as we've had, since we've had the Sustainability Office, are consistent with social equity. So I like it as it is, to be honest with you.
Okay, I'm still not really feeling I'm getting my answer really, or question answered correctly. But, so like Martin Luther King, I'm sure you're probably a fan, is right, correct?
Of course.
Okay. So when he talked about equality, was, was he not right? Was he not going far enough? Was, was there something wrong with his message of equality?
Not at all whatsoever.
Okay. I, I don't understand why we wouldn't go with equality still and why we want to change to equity. Why, what, what makes the difference? I'm not seeing it. And I keep asking if I can't get my answer.
I, I think he's answered the question. I'd like to move on, and I think we're, continue the discussion. I have trustee Muzel next, then trustee Ratan.
I'd like to hear from Dawn.
Oh, okay, trustee Ratan.
The point I'd like to make is, I am certain that a team of people worked on this who are very invested stakeholders around sustainability and had a conversation about it. And when I've met with Christie, Chrissy and Jay, they've been very passionate about it. And if they're involved, and this is the wording that they felt really gets the policies intent across, I'm fine with the wording as is.
Anything else, trustee Ratan? At the moment? No, okay. Trustee Muzel.
I, I raised this question with Dr. Bound and, and Mike after the Committee of the Whole as well. Because I, I don't quite understand. I know there's a lot of discussion and debate about what social equity means in, in the DEIB context. I wasn't sure, and I'm still not completely clear, how it applies to what we do at the college, whether it's in our procurement or our teaching or otherwise. And so I, I don't think equality defines it any better for me. I, I'm not sure this, this triple bottom line works as well for this institution as it might. After, did some research on it on private businesses. And that the last thing I'll say is that let's all understand that these three things sometimes conflict with one another. And so putting all three of them down there doesn't mean we find the right answer every time easily, that economic prosperity can sometimes conflict with ecological balance. And whether it's social equity or social equality, might conflict with ecological sustainability as well. So I, I think, I, I think I know where we're headed, and I think I know how we're going to apply this. So I was comfortable with social equity, but I did think it was worthy of a discussion. and I appreciate Mark bringing it up.
Trustee, thank you. Does that include your?
Yes, I'm done.
Thank you, Trustee Muzel. I will say, and I thank the trustee for raising the issue and for his questioning, and I think it's a worthy question and goal. In my mind, social equity is striving toward what I believe is in the Declaration of Independence, that all men or people are created equal, and we're just striving toward that. I happen to believe that institutions should do that. We should work as, I believe it's Cambridge, Cambridge Online defines, there's so many definitions for equity, could be ownership in stock, for instance, but I believe it's defined here as a situation in which everyone is treated fairly according to their needs and given, and no group of people is given special treatment. I think sometimes we talk past each other in this society, and I thought I'd raise an example. I was taking environmental law at the University of Missouri-Kansas City in the fall of 2006, and I got my first A in law school, which really helped my GPA. And we're all sitting there on our laptops, and it's largely, there were conservatives in that room, but it's largely a group of liberal law students and some liberal lawyers teaching it. So, we're all sitting there on our laptops, and we're talking about essentially what level of pollution is acceptable. Ecology is here in our definition, I think it's appropriate. And many of us, and I've worked for Clean Water Action in Washington, DC, and many of us are saying, oh, this pollution's bad, and the use of these minerals and the mining is so terrible. Mountaintop mining has destroyed many places in this country and across the planet. And then our professor, who worked at a major law firm here in town, she goes, yeah, but all those, all that mining and all those minerals are needed for the rare earth minerals that go into your computer. And I think in this country, in order to do first world, first class, it's an immense privilege, and we should be aware of that. And I do believe those that can should do more to lift up anybody below us or to just give them a hand up. So, I see equity as striving toward equality. I don't think you're wrong in asking for equality. I do disagree with you probably in the inclusion of equity. But I think while we want our computers, we need to be aware of that pollution we're creating, right? We need to be aware of the runoff that happens, and I have several devices on this table, so I'm guilty on many levels of what I'm talking about. But also trying to be aware of the disadvantaged among us and give them a hand up. So, I do respectfully disagree with you. I thank you for the discussion. I think it's a worthy discussion. You're challenging us, and I'm not saying you're doing anything improper. I welcome it. I hope we can reach some accord and understanding of each other, and with that, I'll conclude my remarks and ask if there's anything further.
I'll just say thank you for the discussion. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. President.
I think just, because I'm, when I think about social equity and think about what is it that we do as a college that contributes to social equity, I think specifically of, and it's going to tie back to the previous of economic prosperity, right? Our programs, whether they're degree or certificate programs, the courses that our students take, equip them with the knowledge and skill that they need to be successful in the workplace and in life in general, right? And as they gain more experience and knowledge, and eventually, the idea is they earn a credential, they take that credential into the workplace. With that credential, with that training, it's also true on the non-credit side of the work, the work that we do in continuing education, creates a greater opportunity for more earning, right? For more earnings, right? It propels them economically, the economic prosperity. That's what that middle piece, and where I believe we fit cleanly into that. When you carry that over to the social equity piece, one of the things that economic prosperity allows our students and graduates, alumni with, is greater economic mobility. So, you know, when we reference, you know, where we live, if I have fewer means, I have fewer options in terms of deciding where I live, where I can afford to work, where I can go, where I can't go, it's limited by my economic prosperity. And when we increase someone's economic prosperity, we increase their mobility. And when we increase their economic mobility, we enhance their social equity. They have greater opportunities. So, what, yeah, so let me just leave it at that.
They're less likely to follow crime, they're less likely to buy into the laws and regulations that we have going on, in my opinion. Is that fair? So, unless there's any other?
Don.
Trustee Ratan.
I know we keep bringing up Martin Luther King, and he's, you know, the person we hold up to delight him.
He's a good guy.
To find somebody to represent equality, and he did this in the 60s. And where he was starting from, he was coming off of years of Jim Crow, Separate But Equal, voting rights, the Poor People Campaign, a lot of things that we take for granted today that we see as like, we don't struggle with those, and we hopefully don't struggle with those in the 1960s. We're in 2020, the game has changed, the technology has changed, and we still have some struggles. So, I think that you can say equality was the same as your, like, remote control that you used back in the day, and it was something new, and we were excited about having a remote control. Now, we can change the TV, turn it off, turn it on, go to Netflix, all from our phone. So, the technology, we still need to change the channel, but we do it in a different way. And so, we need to upgrade where we started with equality and go with equity. As you guys are talking, I did some Googling, and there's this article from MIT that says, "Equality Suggests Providing Every Student With The Same Experience." Equity means working to overcome the historical legacy of discrimination, marginalization, and underinvestment that disadvantages specific groups of people, especially defined by race. Equity requires providing support tailored to the specific needs of the students. Rejecting identical resources and identical instruction is insufficient to meet the different needs of different students. Education advocates stress that equity calls for something different than the same treatment that they associate with equality. So, I'm happy to send this whole article out, and it may not apply, and I may be going on a tangent, but I think we all could go and do some work to define equity versus equality. This is the third time this has come up in our boarding meeting, so we all need to get on the same page, and in my opinion, stop having this discussion, or figure out if we're going to argue this word every time it comes up. That is all I have, Mr. Chair.
Madam Trustee, I would welcome that article if you'd send it to me, please, and I think...
So, one of the things that we are discussing, and again, I know everybody is communicating this in good faith, and we're all trying to make the college better. One of my concerns is that, you know, we're looking at the outcome after they leave here and how it affects them, and why we should be considering that and looking at that. The main thing we should be focusing on is how are we giving them the best education and the most opportunities to learn that we can? And I think sometimes we focus too much on the degree or, you know, or graduating or the certificate, and again, those are great things, I'm not trying to discount that by any means, but it's the idea of giving them more opportunities to learn while they're here should be the focus of the actual education, not the degree. So, and again, I'm not saying that anybody was, I'm just wanting to make sure we're being careful with that, so.
You're communicating your thoughts.
Yeah.
Yes. Thank you, Trustee Hamill. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Do you have anything? Trustee Muzel? I think we're on Trustee Hamill's movement for an amended motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? No?
No.
I have the count as the amended motion failing one to four, and it is the recommendation, again, that I read before, I'll do it again, of the Committee of the Whole that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the creation of the sustainability policy 217.10 as subsequently shown in the board packet. And we've had the discussion, I believe, or should we have a new discussion? I'm going to call the vote, if I may, unless there's an objection. Trustee Ratan? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? No.
No.
The motion passes four to one. The next, next, the Committee of the Whole reviewed the recommended changes of the auxiliary services policy, also a hot topic, 220.00. The recommended changes clean up and reorder language used in the policy and add an applicability and purpose statement. It is the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole, the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve modification to the auxiliary services policy 220.00 as shown subsequently in the board packet, and I so move.
Second.
The motion has been moved by Trustee Cross, seconded by the gentleman, Trustee Muzel. Any discussion? Any discussion? I have these glasses on, I can't see. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? No. The motion passes unanimously. Next, the Committee of the Whole reviewed and recommended changes to the electronic devices policy 424.07. The recommended changes clarify that employees are responsible for expenses incurred for their personal devices and remind employees, college business conducted on personal devices may be subject to the Kansas Open Records Act, also known as CORA. It is therefore the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve modification to the electronic devices policy 424.070 as shown subsequently in the board packet, and I would so move. The motion has been moved by Trustee Cross and seconded by Trustee Ingram. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
There's been, there's been some suggestions from a couple that this is some change in our policy with respect to how we, whether we compensate or reimburse people for use of their own personal devices when they use it for college business. I just thought it'd be helpful to clarify that. Is this, is this a change in that policy or a clarification? It's called a clarification. Clarification. So, is that right? I mean, I don't know who can answer that. Mike, is Mike or? Yes. Okay. Is Leslie on?
Leslie is not here. However, Colleen.
Well, it's been suggested to me that this policy is somehow new in that it makes employees responsible for any costs of their own electronic devices, their personally-owned electronic devices, as opposed to the college paying them a monthly amount or some other thing for their, for their use. So, I'm just trying to clarify, is it, is it a clarification of the policy or is it a change in?
Practices as it relates to reimbursement for devices has changed. The change of the policy is a clarification?
Well, I'm not sure I understand that. So, did the, did we used to have a policy where some or all got reimbursed for personal devices, and that policy changed to where they're not getting reimbursed?
Because on a policy prior to practice, it was not a policy. The policy change that occurred, this change or clarification to that policy, the practice change, it's not a policy, not in policy that.
That's correct.
It's my understanding, if I may, to step up at the risk of taking too much heat here.
Lead me.
That we had it inconsistently applied. That is my understanding. And I'm not looking to blame anybody.
There was some inconsistency of application.
In that practice.
In that practice, but it was also a part of the discussion relative to budget and what's happening in the workplace relative to technology stipends.
I'm sorry to cut you off, Mr. Trustee.
No, that's fine. I just, it had been raised, so I wanted to raise it here to figure out. So, we had a practice that was inconsistently applied, we now have a policy that will be consistent. And I understand it's caused, it's caused some heartburn, and I assume somebody that was benefiting from the previous practice, who is not going to benefit on the new policy, is not happy with that. I just want to make sure that we are providing employees with the college-owned electronic devices to do their job. If I take a phone call on my personal phone that is business-related, but I also could have taken it somewhere else, I don't know that the college needs to reimburse somebody for that, but.
Well, let's clarify, because I know this has caused heartburn. I'm fine with this, I think it's a reasonable business decision, and some we've seen in the private sector. And frankly, I compensate my employees based upon, with this in mind, but not, not, I don't reimburse them for electronic devices, either. So, I'm just saying, laptops are provided, is that right? And then...
You know, and again, this is kind of older. I remember hearing, talking to some faculty, and they think they might have been part-time associates, but they were saying that they were not able to get laptops as well. Is it just full-time employees that have laptops, or just curious? So, but if a dean requests them, they can get them for sure, but is there any way that the dean would, could be denied if he requests it? Okay. Okay, because I, and again, I don't know, and I can't verify what their story they were bringing to me, but they were talking about how they were told to check out laptops from the library, and they would think they could only check it out for a week or two, and then have to go check out a new one, and couldn't keep the same one, and it was a struggle for them when they were using the laptop for work, but I can't verify, I just had that conversation here maybe six months ago with a part-time employee.
I have to say, with that.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Trustee Ratan, did you have anything? I just didn't want to forget about you. Anything else? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? No, Trustee Ratan has her thumb up. The motion passes unanimously. And I believe we have a Kansas Promise update here on page 21. Dr. McLeod provided an overview of the Kansas Promise Scholarship Program, including a review of who is eligible and what programs are eligible for funding and the payment structure. And again, this is a last dollar scholarship, since all of the funding sources must be exhausted for being awarded. There were actually 2,072 scholarship applications from July 20, 2021 to May 1, 2022, in a total of $267,762.52 has been dispersed to 166 eligible students. So, JCC sees actively promoting the scholarship through print, website banners, high school relationships, and counseling sessions. Dr. McLeod listed the reasons for the scholarship denial, including not being eligible, other grants and scholarships are meeting the student's needs, too few enrolled, credit hours and incomplete applications, and counselors and staff work closely with students to assist them in meeting eligibility requirements and navigating the application process. There was also a report for the JCC's Ethics Report Line and the Benchmarking Report. Ms. McLeod presented benchmarking statistics comparing JCC's Ethics Report Line statistics to aggregated data provided by the Navix Global, the college's hotline services provider, and the following is a summary of those statistics, which you can find on page 21. There were other informational items on the packet, no questions were raised regarding the informational items provided by the administration to the Committee of the Whole. The Committee of the Whole's working agenda can be found on pages 22 and 23, and that mercifully concludes my report. The next item, right, on our agenda is President's Recommendations for Actions. I know that Trustee Smith Everett is not here. Do any volunteers to read the Treasurer's Report? Or if not, I shall do. You want some screen time?
Screen time? This is very exciting. We have a report on page 24, starts the Treasurer's Report for the month ending May 31, 2022. During the month of May, the college made payments of $159,800 on Series 2012 and 2019 Revenue Bonds. We received an ad valorem distribution, property tax distribution of $44.6 million from Johnson County in June. That will be included in next month's report, and all the expenses in the primary office And all the expenses in the primary operating funds are within approved budgetary limits. So this would be the next to last month of our fiscal year. Next year, we will end our fiscal year on June 30. It is a recommendation of the college administration that the board of trustees approve the treasurer's report for the month of May 2022, subject to audit, and I so move.
The motion has been moved by trustee Musial and seconded by trustee Ingram. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. The motion for the treasurer's report passes unanimously. And now I will accept the motion to adjourn. The next item is the monthly report to the board by Dr. Andy Baer.
All right. Well, thank you very much, trustees. Appreciate the opportunity to address you each and every month. I'd like to start out in my report, first of all, to report to you that in the spring, we submitted to the Higher Learning Commission a mid-cycle report that are, in essence, our assurances argument around our accreditation and how we operate as a college. That was submitted earlier this spring. It happens in the fourth year of the cycle of the 10-year accreditation cycle. And, and so we submitted that. Sherry Barrett, who retired, had taken the lead on that, but the team continued to work after her retirement. With some back and forth, in, in all, some 350 documents were provided as evidence of the good work that this college does. And I am pleased to say that we met every one of the criteria, which is a good sign of a healthy, well-running college, a very, very positive report. Our next task in the accreditation process is early this fall to identify a quality initiative. So what's required for the remaining time under our accreditation through basically the end of the ninth year is to identify and work on a quality initiative that is a multi-year. It's intended to be a three to four-year project. So we, we can't pick something that is a one-year, quick, get in, get it done, and check. And now we just wait until the accreditation process. They want a long-term, college-wide, impactful quality initiative. So the cabinet and others are working on potential ideas for that. And so we'll be able to report to you yet before that goes in in terms of where we believe we land in a, in a quality initiative. To give you a sense of, and I'm not suggesting that this is, is, but a couple of examples that have already been talked about, but should not be interpreted as those are the projects, because we've got work to do to get to there. We've looked at, for example, our work around guided pathways related heavily to the strategic plan and how we help students get on an academic plan. Guided pathways is a part of that as an option. That is a long-term, multi-year project to implement that, if that were to be our initiative. We're moving forward that work, but that may or may not be our quality initiative. Another example is the crosswalk between credit and non-credit instruction. Instruction that happens on the, the non-credit side of the college, how does that interface and crosswalk over to, to, to credit? There are colleges that do that. How does that align? We know that non-credit instruction is of growing interest for the Higher Learning Commission, so that's another example. We're not going to get there overnight. That's going to take multi-years, multiple years to, to make that work. Those are a couple examples of the level of projects that would need to be identified as our quality initiative. So, you know, certainly we're going to look to the strategic plan as a, a major driver of that information. So anyways, that's the, the first item on my agenda for this morning. Thank you to the team across the college that worked on, on the assurance argument as our mid-cycle review. The positive feedback was, is well-received and very pleased with the work that has been done. All right. We're going to bring it up. All right. So you met David. We will talk about enrollment tonight and then we're going to, as promised in, in the past meeting, updates on VERB, the compensation table, and career lathering. And then we'll talk a little bit about workforce development as it relates to this new major project coming to a community near us very soon. So you met David. Let me talk about enrollment. Enrollment continues to be off-cycle, off-plan. We're down 5% in credit hours and, excuse me, in headcount and 3.5% in, in credit hours. When I look at others, you know, others are down as well from a headcount standpoint, a little bit less than what we're down if we look at our region, we look at nationally. If we look at our non-credit work, we're about flat to where we were last year. I realize that last year, as we look to falls, the fall season for continuing ed, we were at the front end, well, we were well into access to federal resources that flowed down through state and county and so forth to help out from a COVID relief standpoint. If I remember correctly, last year we received about, because of the training we provided, about $2.4 million flowed through us relative to COVID relief. So the, the growth trajectory for continuing ed, they're, they're going to have a lot of work cut out for them this year. They know that. They've set aggressive goals for the year and, and historically, they've set aggressive goals both from a revenue as well as from a, a service standpoint to get there. So they're off a couple, a few percent from where they were last year. At this point in the time, we're talking about a couple handfuls of students.
19.
19 to be exact. So four handfuls of students. But I want to talk about from an enrollment standpoint, the, the reality is this is not at all unique to us. Doesn't make it right, doesn't mean we don't have work to do, but the, the fact is that enrollment challenges that we face are consistently being faced across the country. I'm confident that our team is working hard and continuing to try to find ways to uncover our ways to engage students in new and innovative ways. You know, as I think about the work that they do, I know that if they have somebody who's filled out an application but hasn't yet enrolled, they have, you know, a multi-pronged strategy to reach out to those students to encourage them to, to take the next step and get enrolled. I know that if they are previously enrolled with us but not enrolled with us this semester, that we are, that, that we're reaching out to them and saying, hey, you haven't signed up yet. You were with us in the spring. You were with us in the summer. You were with us last fall. Let's get you in, see your council, let's get you back on track, let's get you enrolled moving forward. If, if a student has filled out the FAFSA but no application, they're contacted, you filled out your FAFSA, we've received your FAFSA information, but you haven't applied to go here. How do we help you make that next step? That we are reaching out to those who are close to graduation, have a reasonable number of credits to be attained this year, to reach out to them and encourage them to come back. We know that students, again, you know, trustee Hamill, to your point, not every student comes here to us expecting to earn a credential. But we know they're close and so if they haven't transferred to another institution, will they come and continue and earn their, their credential with us? As a way to draw that back in. There are targeted measures for efforts towards veterans, towards those who are in programs that are Kansas Promise eligible. There are calls being made by our counselors based on their academic program cluster. And so the, the team is working and, and I am very appreciative of the hard work that, that they do each and every day to uncover those students, to keep them moving forward. You know, in the long run, as we move in and start looking at the, the year ahead, you know, as you start the new school year, you're already planning not only for spring semester enrollment, but you're laying the groundwork in recruiting students for the following summer and fall. And so I know that, you know, our recruitment teams are getting into, you know, high schools four times a year. They can only get in so many times, but they're getting in four times a year. We're in the process of developing an RFP to invite a partner to come alongside us to help us look at our strategic enrollment efforts and to help us from their expertise, help us look at what we're doing, what we can do differently, what we can do better, where are the opportunities that we may or may not be seeing, and helping us do that. But as we move into this fall semester, the critical piece for us is going to be retention. If, if we bring students in at the top end, and I'll, I'll say this in a relatively rudimentary or crass way, if you think about it as a funnel, right? And you have students coming in the front end of the funnel. When you lose students, right, you increase the, the sharpness of the angle of your funnel and have fewer students persisting. If we're going to.
Matriculating.
Yes. If we're going to help them be successful as students and help us also from an enrollment standpoint, we've got to work very diligently in this semester to increase the retention rates of students, because every time you lose a student along the way, it's tougher to bring that student, to fill the top end of that funnel again. And so the, the question is, how do we move our institution to be more of a, of a, of a chute, if you will, than a funnel, right? How do we, how is it a pipeline and not a funnel that restricts? And so that's where we are candidly from an enrollment standpoint. And we know that, that as we move forward through this year, that we've got to do an even better job of retaining our students. And that's why you see increases in, in almost every one of our metrics for this coming year. All right. I'm going to move then into the updates. Yep, go ahead.
I didn't, we're open for questions?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. So I guess my question really is, are we hearing anything from these students that can help us? You know, I mean, if they're not coming back, are they giving us some, some really good reasons on, on why that is and?
Margie or Pam?
How can we?
Or John? And I'm going to ask you to come to the microphone, please. Yeah. Yeah, that's a fair question.
Well, I just, I know where our hearts are.
Yeah. Oh, absolutely.
So.
I know what I hear, but let me.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm John Clayton. I'm the executive director of institutional effectiveness here at the college. And I can't speak directly to those students who aren't returning, but I can speak about those students who maybe stopped out for some sort of time. And we were talking earlier about the CTE survey that we did, and we actually called those students and talked to those students. And some of the feedback we received was a lot of it was due to the COVID-19 was the reason why they had stopped out. And they have told us that once they, everything kind of gets back to a normal operation, that they're planning on reattending and coming back to the college to complete their, their education. But, and, you know, we're not seeing that really at a full scale yet. So I don't know if it's because they're waiting to see that we're back face-to-face or if it's, it's something else now is driving that, so.
If I may.
Yeah.
Vice President Clayton, so is it possible that COVID was just that disruptive in terms of childcare and, and all the other logistics that people need?
Absolutely. I believe it was. I believe there was also some things, other factors that played into that that caused it to be different, a different type of recession than what we experienced before with a lot of the aid that was given out differently this time than what it hadn't passed. In the past, higher education was where they turned to get reeducated. That was, it's a different type of recession this time because that aid was given directly to them instead of through the colleges.
So in other words, they didn't need to come to us because they were receiving direct subsidy?
Correct. Absolutely.
From both administrations.
Yep. So it's, it's, it's changed the, the perspective right now. And then, and then we're also facing that wonderful economic boon right now. The, you know, a lot of the boomers have retired. And so there is that upward mobility right now in employment that these individuals can get the employment without the education right now. And so that's also a factor playing into this.
Not to belabor, but while, while we have you, Dr. Weber and I talked about that a lot, and I think you just raised that issue, but I want to clarify, in other words, are still jobs available?
There are. Our, our unemployment rate for Johnson County is phenomenal right now. It's basically full employment. It's bouncing around right now somewhere around 2.5% to 1.5%, which is really phenomenal. So it's, it's hard to, you know, if you want a job, really, it's, it's out there for you. That's considered full employment.
I do have a question about FAFSA and address. Can John do that or? I know Senator Tom Holland and Senator Baumgartner both fairly well, and I love them both. And I know Senator Baumgartner at the signing ceremony last year for, was this last year, was it, College Promise?
Mm-hmm.
I, I went up to Senator Baumgartner and I said, you know, thank you for your leadership on this issue. And many of us have been advocating that we do it either privately through the foundation or in coordination with the college and some sort of public-private hybrid. And I said to Senator Baumgartner, why did you support this? And she goes, we didn't even have students filling out FAFSA's. And so I think to, to start to put people, if I'm on the right path, to put people into that chute, like we have high school kids that don't even know to fill out FAFSA. And I begin to realize, you know, the privilege of a, what I thought was a lower-middle-class upbringing of my own, but I knew to fill out the FAFSA. And so I think we've got struggles with that issue, right? It's like reeducating every, every grade, every kid as to what needs to be done. Is that part of the problem? Let me frame a question there.
I, I, I think it's a different type of student that we serve here than what a lot of other locations serve. I think we actually serve students who perceive anyway in themselves that they are, may not be eligible for any of the federal financial aid because of the, the status in which they enjoy living in, in this community. And so I, I think there's some challenges that we face there that some of them may feel they may not be eligible, and so therefore they just don't fill out the FAFSA, or mom and dad don't want them to fill out the FAFSA because they want that information shared. So I, I think that's some of the challenges. Margie, is there anything else on that to?
I guess I would say.
And thank you all for participating, contributing.
Thank you.
Margie Shelley, Dean of Enrollment Services. I, I would totally agree with John. I would also say that our financial aid folks are out in the high schools and they do presentations in the high school. We have a FAFSA event here where we invite the community in, we help them complete the FAFSA. I, I think a lot of it is really what John said. In our community, people do not think that they will be eligible for financial aid, so they do not complete the FAFSA.
Or there's an aversion to debt. And I've seen that in my clientele, frankly, that some parents or families just have an aversion to taking on debt and they think it means borrowing money. And I, I guess I was perhaps not even just happy to do it, to go to school. Any other questions?
I want to follow up on this because we've heard a lot about the, the overarching issues with respect to all higher education and through ACCT with respect to community colleges. But when I hear, I applaud the efforts that we're reaching out and we're personally contacting students who were here last spring but haven't enrolled for the fall or are five hours away from graduation. And John, you mentioned from the CTE perspective, we know about why the ones are coming back or maybe they're not coming. But someplace, I want to see the data we're collecting for somebody that says, I'm not going to be able to come back this fall because. I mean, we call them and say, please come back. We have scholarship funds available. We have the Promise Act available. We have plenty of room in our classes. We have, you can complete this program. And they say no, because when, when I hear, I think or I read opinions, I keep thinking we are working enough with enough people that we ought to have data. I mean, I know that's what you live for. But, and, and how do we measure the results of those people that are reaching out? Are, are we reaching out the right way? I, I'm just, I'm very frustrated with enrollment, as you know, and I can't figure out why in a growing county, even with our economy, because three years ago, the economy was really good, pre-COVID. Five years ago, the economy was really good. It wasn't in 10, 11, 12, 13 when we hit our peak of enrollment here. So I'm trying to figure out, like everybody else is, I guess, what is the balance that's leading us to lower enrollment semester over semester? And I know we're, I know we're trying hard. I just haven't heard enough about specific Johnson County Community College reasons why we're not reaching those. And if we've got people calling them, I, I'm hoping we're gathering that information so we can tune our message more closely to them. Because we, high school numbers are going down, so we're going to have to bring back our older students.
our older students, and we're going to have to capture a bigger percentage of the graduating high school students. And we've talked about this a lot. I appreciate what people are trying to do. I just am frustrated that we don't have more data about, when I talked to Joe Smith, Joe said he's not coming back, and here's something about why. And then we can figure out if Joe's the same as Jim and Jill and get some kind of theme going. So that's my soapbox.
I'm editing Wiseacre things I want to say to you because I run a nonpartisan board, but it's a good question. I share your frustration, I do. And yet I think the administration's doing everything they can. I have, I agree with you. It'd be nice to know to come through those that we don't get, but I just, I want to endorse that I, I guess we could always be doing more, but I think it's a professional job. So I just want to say thank you. Any other questions? And I, I don't mean to--
No, we're doing more than we've ever done.
Yeah.
But we ought to be getting some data back on that. That's my point, and I haven't seen that, and maybe it's out there, we just haven't had it yet, so.
Let's raise the mill and get some people going. That was what I was--
I know.
I'm sorry. All right. That was improper. I apologize.
No, you're okay.
All right. Then I'm going to continue on in my report. Is that okay?
Yes, sir.
All right. Back up. All right. All right. So let me get now into the three next topics. The Verb sunsets, the pay table discussion, and the compensation table, and then career laddering is the next three. And again, I'll stop at the end of each one of these slides, and you feel free to jump in with the questions you may have. Since the announcement, we've had five employees who have officially filed, one of which is a faculty member. We have, from a logistic standpoint, faculty who wish to retire as of December 31st and utilize Verb need to declare that by August 19th. Because Verb sunsets on June 30th of next calendar year, all employees must notify no later than January 1st. And so it's a, as we said, it's a six-month notification, okay? From an HR standpoint, the team is gearing up for searches. The advantage, as we've said from the beginning, is with a six-month notice, that gives us more than we sometimes get to get out ahead of search processes. The training is already beginning. We already see it happening with existing searches, the expanding role and expectations of a search committee, but that training begins, has already begun, and will continue throughout this semester and well into next year as well. We are already stepping up our targeted recruitment efforts. We've partnered with LinkedIn Recruiter. Well, we've doubled our capacity there, and we're already finding that LinkedIn Recruiter, the recruiting function of being able to mine the data, if you will, in LinkedIn profiles to identify people who could be prospective applicants for positions that are open. And then additional streamlining efforts within our applicant tracking system, allowing us to more effectively and more efficiently manage the process. As was referenced in the faculty report, Faculty Association report, the committee's been working on a, basically a weekly basis, working directly with Holmes Murphy. And I want to remind us that, you know, there's nothing in this year's budget addition beyond the current structures that we have in place. So there's no additional budget recommended for any recommendations that could happen yet this year. But the group is working hard at that, having discussion, and the HR team and the processes are in place. So I'm going to stop.
If I may, Holmes Murphy does--
Is our benefit consultant. I'm sorry. Thank you. So they advise us on all of our benefits, including retirement.
And when you say any recommendation, that would be a recommendation that someone's going to bring to the board?
There would be a recommendation would follow our recommendation, our procedures within the college, which would, the committee would do their work, they would, if they come to a conclusion of some recommendation, whatever that may be, that would follow its process where it would come to cabinet. And then depending on what happened there, then it may come to the board if it is a benefit for consideration. Also realizing that if there's any benefit for consideration, it would be something that would need to be negotiated with the Faculty Association. So you heard in Brett's report that what they're thinking of isn't, that there's a full range of opportunities to think about there. It isn't always a financial benefit. I think they're being asked to consider lots of options.
Mr. President, trustee Rutan has a question.
Yes.
You're muted, Dawn.
What was our projection for how many people we expected? Was it 250?
I think the initial projections were about 135 employees. Keep in mind, we did not anticipate, we did not expect that there would be significant retirements identified at this time. If you think about, particularly from a faculty standpoint, when you think about when do faculty typically retire, it's retired, it's usually at the end of following academic year.
So we'll get a read on the faculty at next month's meeting. We should have more information. And then for the rest of the staff around Christmas?
As well as faculty, right? So once, once, we get past the August 19th, which is the deadline for, the deadline has come and gone for staff for January 1. The deadline for faculty is August 19th to allow them to have the summer and then the first couple of weeks that they're back. But at that point, then, everything moves in six-month increments. So, you know, if you declare September 1st, then you can retire six months later to utilize the Verb.
We'll have the whole number by August 20th.
Pardon?
We'll have the whole number of people by August 20th.
We will, we will have the staff and faculty who have identified and applied for Verb, who have applied as of August 19th, we will know who they are. But that won't be the full number. I mean, maybe it will be the full number, I doubt it, but those who retire after January 1 have up until January 1 to notify, as long as it's six months. So that's the tricky part. It's always six months.
Okay, got it. Thank you for the clarification.
Yep.
Can you go back to--
I can. Can you bring the slide back up?
Thank you.
The committee meeting weekly with Holmes Murphy is which? Because I'm looking--
That's the group that, at your request, trustees, following the, or as a part of that discussion at our May board meeting, you had asked for a committee to be formed to address what might come next.
Right, okay. And that's what I wanted to clarify, so.
Right.
Okay. Looks like we have a lot of things going.
There is a lot going.
Committee meeting weekly.
Okay.
Mr. Trustee.
Brett, in his report for the Faculty Association, mentioned that committee, and it sounded like there were three principles they're looking at. Is there, I mean, are they arranged around some kind of strategic principles now? Because the first one I heard, and I think I wrote down, was that any replacement would be financially sustainable, and then there were, I think there were two more. So I'd like to see those, I guess, if you can just circulate them, because I think that's important. We have, we have talked about a replacement for Verb, and I think that is very bad language. A replacement for Verb would mean the same fiscal impact as Verb. You could call it something else. So we're looking for an alternative or an option that, I think you mentioned, rewards longstanding employees in a way that's financially sustainable. So I think those, I thought they were good principles. I would just like to have them in front of us so that we know what the committee's looking at because it's a fiscal impact that we were trying to find a solution for, and I don't want to mislead anybody. Private sector, public sector, you don't get something for nothing. And so that's what, I don't think there's a creative way to get something for nothing, but they can come up with other alternatives that our employees think are beneficial and will help us retain people is good.
Anything else by anybody?
Okay, all right, moving along. Then the next is the compensation table. And again, I want to be clear that the changes to the compensation table for staff, right, non-bargaining unit employees, is the direct result of the move to $15 an hour. That is the sole driver or the primary driver for the compensation table changes. The move to $15 created compression resulting in additional adjustments to employees' base, to their base. All staff have now been moved to the new, converted to the new pay table. Staff were notified on June 22nd that of their now current year, fiscal year '23 compensation that included where were they in the previous fiscal year and where will they be this year in terms of rate of pay and level in the pay table, compensation table, both for last fiscal year and for this fiscal year. We held multiple information sessions starting on the 27th of June that continued every day that week, and then into the following week, we had 275 staff members participate in those sessions. Some of our staff members have asked additional questions, they fought, sought further explanation or clarification, and identified, you know, what they questioned might be an error in the transition from the old to the new. The questions are being addressed, and any corrections will be made no later than August 1st of this year. So those processes, many of those have already been completed, and any that are remaining will be addressed no later than the 1st of next month. But the movement to the new compensation table is, for all intents and purposes, done. That is a transition that happened from the old table to the new table. Okay? We'll get some of the, what now have created from a perception standpoint, the complicating factors. We'll get to the career laddering piece in just a moment. But that's, that's the transition from old to new. I'll stop and take questions.
Is there, is there a way to summarize, sorry, Mr. Chair, is there a way to summarize the bullet points of what the concerns have been by employees? Is there a, are there three categories of employees or of concerns? Because my understanding is that nobody received less pay than before.
That's correct.
But they may have been moved into a different grade--
Mm-hmm.
--and in a different place versus the midpoint, which may affect future, their future raises or may result in them capping out earlier, a small number of employees. And there's concern about if somebody comes in that hasn't been at Johnson County Community College, they may come in in the same grid spot, box in the table--
Pay level.
--but get a higher rate of pay than somebody who's been here for five years.
Yep.
So are those kind of the summary of the concerns that are out there?
I think those fairly accurately represent the questions and/or concerns that we have.
And are there, you mentioned corrections will be made by August 1. Was there, corrections implies somebody made a mistake as opposed to, is there an appeal process? Or when you say corrections, do people have the right to say, I don't, I don't think I was moved properly and get an explanation for that and maybe get that--
And that's happening.
--fixed?
Got it. That's happening.
And in the employee engagement part, were people, were people notified that they had a right to, I mean, I assume they knew they had the right to ask questions, but have a process to go through to see? I'm convinced now, nobody's, not everybody's going to be happy, but is there a process that allows people to get the information they need and understand why they are where they are? I mean, that's--
So the short answer is yes. And we know that, I don't know how many, you know, questions seeking clarification, I'm looking at Colleen Chandler, Director in the HR Department. Yes, they're receiving many emails, phone calls, stop-in of questions, many along that line. And so, you know, I think, let me speak specifically to the questions raised, because you've asked this in previous meetings. Well, somebody comes in with same number of years of experience that I have, am I, are they going to be paid more than me? And so if somebody comes in and that, and I'll use, Trustee Musso, you and me as the examples, you're hired in, new to the college, you have X number of years of experience, I'm in that same job, and I have the same number of years of experience, could you come in at more? You could be, your rate that was, is offered to you could be higher than mine. However, as is our current practice as a college, we would look at mine and say, yep, you know what? You have the same identical years of experience, we will raise you to the level that you're at. So in essence, anybody coming in to the college who has identical, you know, we'll use like to like, comparable experience, if you come in making more than me and we can demonstrate, yep, I've got the comparable experience, then my rate of pay will be increased to where you're at. So we've, but that is our practice today. There is nothing new about that.
But if, if I have 20 years' experience coming into the college and you have five years of experience at the college, and we're coming into the same box--
Yep.
I could--
You could be paid more.
And I know that, I've learned in 11 years here that we, we almost worship at the altar of internal equity, which is a policy choice and isn't necessarily good or bad. But I don't have, part of this is to recruit the people we need to recruit, and I don't think I have a problem with it, and I think what we're going to have to do is figure out how it's implemented over some time to see if it really causes as much concern and angst as it has thus far. So I just want to make sure I understand it as best I can in a very complicated--
Trustee Musso, if somebody, in your example, has, if you have more experience than I do, and I've been working here for five years, and that's my experience, and you come in with more than that, you could be paid more than I am paid, but you bring more experience to the college. And that, you know, again, that is, that is the reality.
That's all I have.
Yeah. And I don't mean that in an uncompassionate sort of way, but the reality is if somebody brings more experience, they could earn more.
Dr. Bound. Can you hear me okay?
I can.
That's okay. Sorry, Leslie Harden, Vice President for Human Resources. I just want to confirm that our current compensation policy is to give relevant experience based on the job duties. So an individual who may have, as Dr. Bound was referring to, may have 20 years' experience outside of JCCC, may be paid comparable to somebody who has 20 years of experience in JCCC. So we give comparable experience, including those outside of JCCC.
I'm still entertained by the term worship at the altar of internal equity. I wouldn't believe it if I haven't seen it. Like, it's true. Any other questions for President Bound here?
I guess--
I, I guess.
Oh, go ahead.
So, and there were concerns about the leveling. I think you're going to address that in a later statement, right?
That's correct.
Okay. I'll, I'll save my comments.
Okay, okay. All right, I'm going to move forward then onto career lathering. So, separate from the compensation table is the discussion and the work around career lathering, okay? They are separate. You can do a compensation table, you may or may not have career lathering, okay? And so career lathering is part of our strategic plan effort, right? It is goal for employee engagement is where that comes from. Now realize, you'll hear us talk about career lathering and job families. Those are synonymous. It depends on who you're talking to, right? If you're talking to HR folks, they have a tendency to talk about job families. But job families and career lathering are in essence synonymous terms. I would describe them as lay terms and HR terms with tremendous respect. But it is separate from the changes in the compensation table. I'm going to read the, the definition of, of a job family or a career ladder. But let me say this, what do career ladders do for our employees? One, the benefit of doing this is it creates a, a career development opportunities for staff. It facilitates career planning and, and the career planning discussions and clarifies the need for ongoing training and education related to a job family. If you're going to be an accountant or you're in accounting and you want to progress up in there, you may need additional training and education in accounting or business. It ensures consistency in, in, in job evaluations by comparing comparable or similar jobs within the same family. And it assists in our ensuring internal and external equity and certainly market competitiveness. When you look at other colleges that have and other employers that have career lathering structures, it's, it's clear. You can see in this job family, in this career lathering opportunity where the progression opportunities are. It gives our supervisors and employees, staff members, the ability to have very, you know, specific conversations about, you want to move from this level to that level, here's how you go about doing that. So as we move forward with career lathering, we're going to focus in on, and we've talked about this before, the 500, and, uh, starting out with an initial 550 unique job titles out of just over 1,600 unique job titles. The first round is expected to be completed this fiscal year. And human resources is in the process as we speak of engaging an external consultant with the expertise in this area to help us with the analysis and to help us develop the career lathering structure, right? Bring in an outside party to help us do that. That allows us to expedite a process. And finally, the, the budget includes, right? It included $500,000 for, for career lathering to help us implement this process and to address any issues that come out of this in, from an equity standpoint as we implement this. But I also want to be clear to say that career lathering does not always equal an increase in pay, right? It's about the opportunities and the clarity of what this, what this creates. So there's lots of work that needs to happen with these 550 jobs. We believe that having an, an outside firm come alongside us will provide the support that the HR department needs, but also then enhances the objectivity, if you will, of, of the work as it's performed. So I'll stop there.
Any questions for Dr. Bound?
I have a couple of comments. I, I, it's awfully quiet in here. But I guess the question that I feel like, you know, we've, we're going through these presentations, we're hearing about all of this now. In my heart, I want to say, where was all of this two months ago? I don't, I, we're here, we're listening, whether my fellow colleagues agree with me or not, you know, I've never, ever said out loud, I've sat on this board for seven years, but I know you've been here longer and you've been here longer, but I've been here for seven years. And this just feels backwards to me. But we're here. So I'm, I'm going to throw it out there with the attempt to do something with Committee of the Whole. I think, you know, things were discussed and vetted more thoroughly with Cabinet and an understanding of what was being brought to us. This, we got to deal with it, but I am just sitting here somewhat frustrated. So we've, we've got to do better.
So, yeah, I'm, I'm in agreement with, with Nancy on this. This was one of my concerns. I, I did vote for it as well to raise minimum wage, and I, I do think we needed to raise it. But I had a lot of questions on compression, that being a concern, and I've seen it in every place I've ever been. And, you know, the person that's been here 10 years and somebody else comes in new and they're neck and neck or right next to each other, and figuring out how to balance that is so key. And I know that, I'm sure work was done on to try to mitigate that, but I had more, more questions and wanted more information. And I think typically we move along too fast. Again, going back to when we did VERB and I voted against that, getting removing VERB, and now we're talking about an alternative to VERB. I think all those things should be handled together and have multiple chances to really chew on this as a conversation together, ask for more input from different people and kind of slow that process down a little bit. And maybe, you know, going away from the Committee of the Whole and going back to what it looked like before, maybe that will be helpful, seeing those things come down and have more time to discuss too. But I, I do feel like we're, we're making these decisions or voting before we really have all the information we possibly need with, and everybody's input into these things before voting on them. And, and so again, with the career lathering, even if it does not necessarily mean a compensation now, quite often the compensation comes next year with a reevaluation. Well, you were a supervisor, they moved you to manager, called it the same thing, you know, just, you know, slightly reallocated what you're doing, and then somebody comes in and says, well, if you're a manager, if you look on, you know, the market research, it says this should be making, you know, 15,000 more. So now, a year or two later, they are receiving that compensation. And so we also need to be careful with career lathering in that way as well, so.
And, Chair Cross, I, I don't mean to divert the conversation to Committee of the Whole, but I just think this just feels backwards.
Yeah, and if we had, if we discuss it and we sit on it and we discuss and digest these conversations, hopefully we don't get the cart in front of the horse, kind of like we're, like you're saying, I kind of feel like that's what we're doing a little bit right now, too.
I understand.
Trusty Musil, do you have anything?
Well, I, I think this is a Committee of the Whole topic or a retreat topic because we've got a lot of HR issues that we're trying to, we're trying to, we're trying to model for the current workforce setting that we're in, in the current market. And, and I, I will admit a lack of understanding of career lathering and job families. And I think we could, if we could walk through a couple of examples in the Committee of the Whole or retreat, I would understand that people that are administrative assistant level X, no matter where they are in the college, we're going to figure out a way to give them opportunities to advance. And I think that's what we're trying to do, but it's, it's a little bit theoretical today to me. So I think, I think we can, I think we can get that to a more granular, granular level in the future.
Okay, I stepped out for a minute. Anybody else? Trusty Ratan?
Trusty Ratan.
Um, I, I don't feel like the intention is right there to make these corrections, especially the $15 per hour and to re-level and to do job families. I think it's the right intention. I do think that it's probably 85% right or some, the majority of it's right, but if I were in the 15% or even in the 2%, that's just off, I would definitely feel impacted by it and feel like there's some unfairness to it. So, you know, I think it may take some time to get us closer to like 98% right or 99% right. And I too, just being new, would appreciate a little bit more detail on this, a little bit more education on it without getting into the weeds and telling this group what to do, but just so that I can really understand when I receive emails and, and understand the background. Thank you.
Thank you, Trusty Ratan. I think I agree with Trusty Musil that this is an appropriate topic for a retreat or further review. I agree with Trusty Ratan. I, I think this is mostly correct and although chock full of human error, one of my favorite politicians once said, you know, mend it, don't end it. And I think that, we've got to take a step back and everything we've talked about here tonight, in my opinion, has been for a reason, right? Like, we have ridiculous market circumstances right now, unprecedented public subsidy into the economy the last two years, and we went up with my full approval and support for the administration to make a somewhat nimble move to keep us competitive in the ministerial market at $15 an hour, right? I mean, so these are full-speed mistakes, and I think that, even assuming they're mistakes, excuse me, I, I think that this has been a notable and reasonable business decision by the administration. So I, 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 Dr. Bound, I might call him two, three times a day and maybe too much, but like, he, he knows when I disagree with him, and I, I do do so in private. But on this, I, I support the administration. It perhaps needs some mending, but I, I would like to discuss it further, either Committee of the Whole or in retreat. Yes, please.
Okay.
Any other questions, thoughts, concerns for Dr. Bound?
One last slide.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. The last, we'll focus then on the exciting news for our region. As it was announced, DeSoto will be the home of the next electric vehicle battery plant by Panasonic. And, and we as a college have been a part of that recruitment effort from very early in the process. Again, I look to Lisa Waldman and her team who, early on in this process, were engaging with the, the representatives from the site teams that were here and from Panasonic eventually. I had the chance to go and, and this January, visit their facility out in Reno and to see firsthand the sort of facility that could be coming our way. The result is, it's a, a $4 billion investment in Kansas. It's the biggest investment in the state's history. It will, through Panasonic alone, should create 4,000 new jobs with an estimate of 4,000 additional jobs between the supply base that could grow and develop in this region, as well as the impact on other businesses in the area as the, as the, as the market increases. The training and education support for this project through the state is a $5 million training investment from the state, and we will be one of the lead players in that work. We're meeting early next month with several of our other partners in terms of the, the workforce development, really in helping them ramp up for production in the second half of '24. So this is a very, very rapid ramp up. You know, if I look back to the time we had in early projections, it could be as fast as 500 employees a quarter. I mean, it's a, it's a fast ramp to get into production. Our job will be to provide workforce training to make sure that their shop floor employees are ready to go and are prepared to be successful in the workplace. As I said, we're meeting with, with partners early next month. Right from the beginning, we've been working with Kansas City Kansas Community College, Peaslee Tech in Lawrence, as well as the DeSoto Schools, USD 232. But there's no way that, that the four of us will accomplish this on our own or together, I mean. We're going to need additional partners in this. They're going to need, you know, those with technical certificates, associate degrees, bachelor's degrees and beyond to meet their professional and technical staff needs as well. And we'll have an important role to play in that. And so we're, we developed the proposal together with the others to respond and to attract them from a workforce development standpoint. And now we're at the point where we're waiting for Panasonic and the folks from the state to say, all right, we're ready to engage in that next step. So I know really high level what this looks like. And so it's, it's going to be a lot of work for us. It's going to be heavily on the non-credit side. It's going to be heavily on the continuing net side of the work that we do. But it will have an impact on us from a, a credit-bearing, credit-seeking student as well. So happy to answer questions or tell you that we're yet to know.
Any questions for Dr. Bound?
All right, that concludes my report. Thank you very much.
If I may, just say on Panasonic, I think it's exciting. I think it's a useful way to find something, it's going on the old Sunflower site, right?
Mm-hmm.
Sunflower institution.
Correct.
Site, so it's recycling a brownfield and that's good. But I think your work on it was, was tremendous, and I think Dr. McLeod and anybody else, Elise, am I blanking on her last name?
Elise Waldman.
But I, I think we did a wonderful job and all of our strategic partners, I, I say thank you. And it's, it's terribly exciting and I think critically timely in our economic standing in the world, so. Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I, I think just in closing, let me just say this to you as trustees. Thank you for the direct and honest feedback. I, my commitment to you is that we will work together and we'll work together with our college as we roll this forward. And I'm talking now specifically about the three updates that I provided related to VERB, related to, related to the compensation tables and related to career lathering. I have confidence in our team's ability to move this forward and to work this through and to find ways to value our employees. There's been no intention in this to say that long-term employees are anything other than incredibly valuable to us as a college. And so I want to say thank you to our HR team, to our leadership team and to the work that we have had. And so we will work deliberately and intentionally with you as trustees. Thank you.
And I just want to add to that, if I may. I mean, this is the same group largely, right? They carried us through COVID, helped us land the Panasonic deal.
Mm-hmm.
I, I do say, and I mean this for all of our employees, that I think it is an amazingly and historically talented bunch that we've had here, and we thank you all.
Thank you.
The next item on our report is new business, and I have something to raise, but I believe Trusty Ratan does also.
Um, would you like me to go ahead and?
If I may, and, and I, I know Dr. Bound and I have discussed it, I think you and I briefly talked about it. It would be my goal, Trusty Ratan, that we discuss it tonight, perhaps, and then maybe revisit it at Committee of the Whole, and then again next month at the meeting. That, that would be my preference to proceed. If you'd rather hold off, I'm fine with that, too.
No, I would love to discuss it and I would love to have people sleep on it. I don't know if someone can pop it up on the screen.
Psychology, we call it exposure. You have to expose people to ideas.
Yes, let's do it.
Pop up.
So if it can be popped up on the screen, I, I have it on mine, but I don't know. Anyone have it there?
You have it on your screen, you can share it. Will you walk us through how to do that?
I have like a million things open.
And I didn't mean to.
No, it's okay.
Catch you flat-footed, I apologize.
I will find it on here somewhere. Oh, there it is. Okay? It's up? I think.
Yes, we can see it.
Okay. Okay, so new business agenda item. My proposal is. My proposal is to have trustees as ambassadors. And the reason and the purpose for this is for us as trustees to assist in recruiting and in public relations, to help close the ultimate gap in enrollment in JACC. This could be one of the many actual plans that we employ to get more students to come to our college. The structure that I envision is that, as trustees, we make dedicated vision, visits, or take road shows to two to four high schools in Johnson County each quarter, or two visits per semester. So I would have three or four schools, and each one of you would have three or four schools, or two to four schools. The audience that we're talking to here needs to go to, the message needs to go to high school seniors, I see, I would say, in the fall, and to high school juniors in the spring. We go to each college for 60 to 90 minutes. So for us, if we're, if you're worried trustees, for me, I think it's a maximum of a six-hour commitment per quarter, in a total of three months. We will share information that is provided by college public relations departments, meaning we will have a script, and we will stick to that script. And it's important, because we need to share the same standard message across all of our local high schools. Examples are, we could have a theme, we could talk about exciting majors we want to really highlight, we could talk about scholarship opportunities, we could spend one of those meetings talking about our sports teams, STEM themes, quick majors, or quick things we could do where it takes you nine months, you can get out in the workforce. So there's a lot of themes that we could use as we go and talk to these schools, as we work with PR department, say Kate and Chris Gray. We could also include some swag giveaways. I love a big t-shirt, or a pen, or a notebook with JCC on it. I really like the ones that say property of JCC, they're navy blue and white, those are cute. And then, if we do, as we expect, have any Q and A's, we can have a point of contact here at the college, then we can forward those to, to make sure we get those questions answered. Another option is to have student or staff accompany the trustee as well. So I tried to count up how many schools we have. I counted up 18 public schools. I think there's an alternative school as well, so that might bring it to 19. And we could split these geographically, or if you have a relationship, and again, just go and visit them, and, and this quarter, we're all talking about STEM careers. Next quarter, we're talking about scholarship opportunities. A quarter after that, we, we have another thing. Other options for phase two are tap into an alumni network, expanding this to private high schools, and expanding this to have trustees go to civic groups. But right now, I really want to tailor our message to these high schoolers, and develop a relationship with these schools and their counselors and principals, that they expect us to come and talk to students, and do something, just kind of rah rah, and generate some excitement about JCC.
Thank you, Trustee Ratan. Thank you for presenting that. I, I think it's an interesting idea, and one worthy of further exploration. I had said to you earlier, I, I would second it. Dr. Bound has approached me, and I, I believe I discussed with you prior, that we would perhaps shelve its nine, just introduce the idea, and then readdress it at the Committee of the Whole. Would that, would that be sufficient for you?
Yes, and we can make sure that other trustees get some input on it as well.
And Alatha West is not on there, just so you know. I, a little birdie told me, and I just wanted to bring that to your attention, so. And my family's from Alatha originally, so I wanted to share that. But I think it's a, it's a great idea, and I think we should be out in the community more, helping the administration, who are doing a lot. And my, I, my goal in supporting something like this is to simply supplement and help our faculty and administration do everything they can to get enrollment up, because as every time we talk about all of the requirements that we have for federal subsidy or anything, I'm like, well, do we get money to do that? Like, does somebody pay us to do that? Like, no, you have to do it as a part of the appropriation process, so. Unless there's any questions for Trustee Ratan, I'm going to move on to, go ahead.
May I? I like this, Dawn. I, I've said for a number of years, I think trustees are underutilized in promoting the college, and this is one way we can do it. But I want it to be part of a strategic enrollment effort, in conjunction with the Strategic Enrollment Committee that we have, and that's why I would, I would like a more structured information on, in a, again, a retreat or Committee of the Whole, on what are we doing, and how can trustees be used in that.
Yeah.
I was laughed at many years ago for believing we should establish a parade trust, a parade brigade, that would make sure that the college was in every parade in Johnson County. Now, I know our driver's ed car usually is now, but we're, we just don't take advantage of opportunities to promote the college, and Dawn, your idea is something we can do as trustees. When they get back to career nights at high schools live and in person, we need a trustee there, and we need faculty members there. Brett, we need your folks there to help us sell this. And so, I'm, I'm all in on this, but it needs to be done as part of an overall effort.
I agree.
And, and we've got St. James, St. Thomas Aquinas, Bishop Miege, Marinatha, we've got other high schools out there that we ought to be hitting, but when, when we look at them, we need to, we need to, need to do that strategically, as part of the administration and the faculty's effort that's ongoing, but utilizing trustees and making us put some of our effort into that.
Yeah, and, and when we decide on it, we can roll in the, the private schools later, or we can roll in the private schools right now.
And the homeschool.
And the homeschools.
Yeah.
Trustee, Trustee Ratan, anything else? May I?
No, thank you. I think that it's maybe incremental, but I think that we should all be doing whatever we can to be a part of the solution.
Oh, I agree, and I, I thank the trustees, Musil, Ingram, everyone for, for their input. We, we were but two brains, and not near as big as yours, so thank you for your input, because it was something I've always wanted to do, and I, I don't remember the parade brigade, if I'd have not been here.
You, you laughed.
It not, it did not receive a second.
No, I just, it was an idea, it was.
I'm sorry, I mean, with the second kid, I matured some, so. I apologize.
I'm sure it will take off now.
Check the notes, check the notes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, and, and thank you, Trustee Ratan. I absolutely applaud and appreciate the trustees' collective interest in engaging us, and helping us engage our community to draw more attention about the educational opportunities here, and drawing more and more students to wanting to be with us. And so, thank you for, for your desire to do that. I think we've got lots to talk about and think through. I think, the last thing I want to do is say, no, you can't do that, because that, right, at the same time, there are a couple of things I want us to keep in mind. From an HLC standpoint, we're going to want to really try to thin line here, because the HLC is, and Mr. Clayton was quick to remind me that, you know, we've got to watch things from an HLC standpoint of, of trustees being involved too deeply in the operations of the college, and this is one of those things that they've seen at others where it can be complicated. Having said that, my goodness, we've got to find ways to engage you in the community to draw attention to this college. And so, we'll, we'll, we'll look through this, I, you know, I, I know for a fact that there's only so many times we can get into the school in any given year, and there's certain hours of the day that you can get into the school. Margie Shelley was quick to remind me, look, you can get into the school, and Pete Belk, you can get into the school at the end of the school day, but only so many times during the year, and when you do that, that's not where you're going to meet a lot of students, because the students have moved on with the rest of their life, practice, or going home, or going to job, or whatever. So I, I think we've got to be really strategic about how we do this. Thank you for wanting to do this, and wanting to engage with drawing more interest and opportunity to come to Johnson County Community College. So we'll continue this conversation, thank you, and, and we'll just, we've got to find a way to make it work that fits with the other efforts that are also going on here, and I think there are ways to do that.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this? One other item I wanted to raise and bring to everyone's attention. I was going to ask Dr. Bound if we could start the September meeting at 4:00, perhaps an hour earlier. I guess the Chiefs Chargers game is that night? I had no idea until I walked in, and no kidding, three people approached me and said, hey, man, can we? I'm like, okay.
Is it a home game?
It is a home game. Now, I know we've had meetings on other Chief nights, but does anybody have any objections starting at 4:00? You're looking to be funny. I honestly, I don't care.
Sounds great.
Because that would be the published date, kind of, right here?
Oh, that's right.
And so, if we're going to modify that?
What is this, what DVR is for, huh?
Well, we could still start the publication at 5:00. I mean, there's probably ways around that. We've noticed that so far, we've published now.
Published it, yeah.
Okay.
But it will make it much easier.
And we need to know that now, then, is what you're saying? But I mean, very quickly.
Okay, if a lead balloon falls, like, I'm not going to give it CPR.
I, I suggest you talk with Dr. Bound and get that worked out as chair, it's your most important responsibility.
Well, I wanted, okay, very good.
I'm fine with it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you really? I didn't know that. Okay, good then. So on old business, we have the Policy Ad Hoc Committee, which I know Trustee Ingram is on.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just like to give a brief update. Trustees, Beth Everett and I met earlier this month, and we reviewed, discussed, and took our own little highlighters to those policies. We do plan to meet next week to formalize our thoughts prior to discussion and presentation to the board. We will be meeting with Kelsey Nazar, and at some point, we will be asking for consideration of a workshop to discuss with the full board.
Any questions for Trustee Ingram and her Policy Ad Hoc Committee on Subcommittee's report? Did you write that? Policy Ad Hoc Committee? That's funny. Hearing no discussion, we'll move on to consent agenda. The consent agenda items are present in your board packet from pages 36 to 45, in addition to the Human Resources Addendum. Are there any items the trustees would like to pull off of the consent agenda for discussion? Hearing seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
Motion has been made by Trustee Musil, and seconded by Trustee Ingram. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Those opposed, say no, please. The motion passes unanimously. We do have an executive session tonight, upon which I have a series of documents accordingly. I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of personnel matters of non-elected personnel, in order to protect the privacy interests of the individual to be discussed. No action will be taken during this session, and the executive session will last for one hour, beginning at what time? 7:30 appropriate? And ending at 8:30 PM Central Time, at which time, open session will resume at this same location, for those in person and by Zoom video conference for the rest. We would like to invite Dr. Andy Bound and our counsel, Kelsey Nazar, to join us in this executive session, and may I please have such a motion?
So move.
Second.
Trustee Musil, seconded by Vice Chair, Trustee Ingram, and we will see you back here at 8:30. Thank you all. Thank you. We, we are back at the July 21, 2022, meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees Meeting, and after meeting an executive section, session in which no action was taken, upon election of the board following the executive session for the president's performance evaluation, I move the board to approve an amendment to the president's employment agreement to increase the president's base compensation and any benefit by 2.5%, and that the board chair be authorized to execute an amended contract incorporating such base compensation increase, following review by the college's legal counsel.
So move.
I moved.
Oh, you moved? Then she could say.
You got it. Musil moves, Ingram seconds. Any discussion? Like, we can't discuss it, I don't think.
Yeah, we can. Sure, we're in public session.
Mr. Chair.
I, I just want to say that I think this, our discussion with you throughout the year, and then as part of the evaluation, Dr. Bound, has demonstrated an openness, and a willingness, and a feedback loop both directions, that is very valuable to the college. And every year that I've done this, in evaluating a president, we look back and we tend to remember things that are disruptive and uncertainty-causing over the successes, and that's probably just human nature. But I think what the board is saying tonight is that we have confidence in you going forward, and look forward to continuing working on this. So thank you for your service, and your family.
I, I concur, President Bound, and I, I think you've done a, a, a good job this past year, and this reflects our confidence in you, and there has been some tumultuous times, and I know you've made some tough calls, but I appreciate your creativity and ingenuity, openness and honestness. I've said this to you before, but I, I don't believe I can say it enough, you know, President Lincoln said, you have to make a problem concrete, so that you know what you're dealing with, and then how to take it apart, and I appreciate your candor on enrollment, and the creative ways in which our, our colleges is tackling that issue, and I jumped into that without asking if anybody else wanted to discuss.
Nothing to add.
Trustee?
No, nothing to add.
So with that said, I, I'd ask all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And you were an aye?
Yeah.
We have no nos, the motion passes. And I would entertain a motion to adjourn, or did I forget something? Okay.
So moved.
Second.
The motion is seconded. It's seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries, we adjourn.